And this, this happens often where we're segregated and the side roads sometimes have priority over the cyclists. Or there's a zebra crossing on the cycle path, but not on the road. Or that sort of thing, or you have to go around the bus stop if you're on the bike path, but you don't have to if you're on the road. So I think there's a, there's a number of issues around whilst the, so I'm, I'm in favour of cycling. I cycle on my bike a lot, but I think people who use their bikes a lot don't want to be slowed down to use the bike lane. So, so I guess the question is, the two questions are one around what, how are numbers now compared to car uses? And where do we want them get to? And the second is around, so two things, one around joining up and one around uh progress on the bike lanes being as quick for a cyclist as if we were on the road. Thank you.
Okay. So the, I think the first one is about usage and, and probably a bit about value for money. I men- I mentioned about usage in the slides and, and that it's not all about data. I think it's about giving a choice and alternative. That's the transport strategy. But, and by comparing to car numbers is going to be really challenging because it's, you know, it, we're not there yet. Um, and the numbers, as you, as you mentioned, are in the hundreds nearing thousands. Um, the data we've provided shows that there is growth where we've provided interventions. Um, they are averages which includes seasonal variation. So you see peaks during the summer. Um, but I think fundamentally that the schemes are reviewed at several stages to ensure that we are providing value for money. There's an economic analysis and based on the existing usage versus what we think is going to be the predicted usage. I think I provided an example in the document. Um, so, so the value for money is based on that data and not in comparison to, to car and motor tra- traffic. Um, the bit about, the bit about um, the actual type of provision and cycle usage of the provision. It's funny you mentioned Dewsbury Road because we use that in the cycle safari. And the reason we use Dewsbury Road is because it shows there's been an incremental change. There's, there's set for people that don't know Dewsbury Road has three distinct sections of cycle infrastructure. There's, there's a piece that was probably squeezed in 20 or 25 years ago that was an add-on that is actually on the wrong side of the road. Um, and it requires you to cross and then cross back again. You then get what we call unidirectional where you have cycle provision with flow of traffic, which was done in conjunction with a road safety scheme in the district centre. And then the final piece is the more latest provision, which has bidirectional, fully segregated provision, which I think starts and ends near the fire station, as you mentioned, um, that is fully segregated, high quality and the level that we are expected to deliver nowadays. What that does is highlight the challenge of the previous section. And I come back to the principles really of cycle infrastructure. What you're highlighting is that it needs to be direct. You know, that is one of the principles you, you mentioned about. If you are delayed, it then encourage you, potentially encourages you to, to continue on the carriageway. And that's because it's, it's been compromised, hasn't it? And it's not followed. The principles weren't necessarily in place at the time that that was designed. But if we would be designing that full corridor now, we wouldn't have that delay. We would, it would be direct. It would be coherent. Um, so yeah, I think it all comes back to ensuring we have high quality um, cycle provision that caters for everybody between the ranges of eight to eighteen beyond. Um, and adheres to national guidance.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to bring in councillor Wilson. If we can just keep everything as brief as possible, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm interested in, you, you've asked us to advocate for active travel, um, you know, make fuss about it, which uh is definitely important, something we do. But I'm interested in what your views are as to what, what you think the, the barriers are for us to, to champion active travel. My view is that one of the issues is um snagging, which is probably inevitable for any big scheme, means that it's quite hard actually to um, to advocate for it and say this is a great thing because uh schemes take longer than expected or, or, or whatever. Um, and is there anything you can, you can, you're doing amazing work getting funding to put schemes in, but is there anything you can do to reduce basically the amount of snagging and overrun there is on schemes? And is there any way Active Travel England can help you with that as well?
Uh, I, I think, I think it is a challenge around the delivery of schemes and the timelines. Um, I think, I think what we can do really is, is much more around promotion and success stories. Um, and, and we have been discussing that about um, with our comms team about how we can demonstrate success. Um, particularly around like um, getting people's examples, lived examples that can, we can communicate to show that how, how the benefit of the cycle infrastructure is positively impacted on their lives and their travel behaviours. Um, so I think there's a bit around, there's certainly a bit around comms. Um, delivering active travel schemes is challenging because essentially reallocating road space. And more often than not, um, part of that is you are um narrowing the carriageway and create, making it difficult for the construction methods because you've got smaller working zones and safety zones. So I think we might be referring to the A six sixty, for example, which is a challenging busy corridor. Um, but we have to safely manage and, and the, the workmen on site and, and do it in a safe, sensible manner with our traffic management arrangements. Not sure if I've fully answered your question, but.
Kate.
Suppose that the key to this is working with our supply chain and our contractors. And we've obviously just rebid the, the minor frameworks and others. And, and hopefully you will have seen a step change as well along the A six sixty in terms of the organisation. We're now currently working with them. And I think coming back to what David was saying about variability of funding, it's a real challenge to build those longstanding relationships. And I think the benefit of having the five-year funding allocations that we've got is that ability to work with our supply chain, to build that capability and to deliver better um and swifter solutions on the ground.
Thank you. Councillor Layton?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to start by saying I work in Leeds city centre. And I've definitely seen an increase in people um using some of the bikes and cycle lanes, which is great to see. Um, my question is actually related to, we've, we've had some um of our car parks recently have um uh charges introduced that service local train stations. And I wondered whether that would have been uh an opportunity to reinvest some of those funds back into the local cycle networks to service those train stations, to, to encourage people to take cycles to the train stations. Thank you.
Um, so I think that's something we can take away and have a discussion with, with Wyka because they obviously um run the, the car parks and the station and the revenue that comes from that. Um, certainly we, we look in terms of, one of the things that, that's been covered in the report is the development of the LC Whip. And that obviously looks at key origins and destinations, train stations being one of those. So we can certainly talk to them, post this and, and understand if there is a stream. We could target specifically linked to the revenue that they're going to be getting from the stations.
Um, perhaps that could be a recommendation that we support. Um, but in the first instance, it might be worthy just speaking to councillor Prior and he can take that up originally. Uh councillor Buckley?
Thank you, Chair. Um, and just going back to something that councillor Prior mentioned. Um, in outer north east, we've got no railway stations at all, and for that matter in inner north east. So a whole section of the city is completely dependent on buses. Um, and for instance, Wetherby, Harewood or Woodley to a certain extent has got a very poor bus service. So you've got 70,000 people without access to uh fast transit. Now, just going on to the cycling aspect of things. Uh, a good example um of the infrastructure problems is this flyover here, the Sheepscar flyover. That was narrowed in order to put a cycle lane in. And given that fewer than two percent of the population use cycle or two percent of journeys, fewer than two percent of journeys are done by cyclists. So that means 98% of journeys are not done by cyclists. The lanes there are now dangerously narrow. Cars have become wider. There are vans and lorries on there. And I've often coming up there been very, very tight to being hit by another car. So it doesn't work. Now, when it comes to the 2030 target of four percent, what happens if it's not met? Because I was in sales all my life and if I didn't meet my targets, I was in big trouble. I could have been sacked. In fact, I was sacked. That's another story. But it's, this is, this is, this is a classic example, isn't it, of municipal targets? What do they mean? They mean nothing. It's just a slogan. And the West Yorkshire, whatever it's called, ZAR for cycling. Where's the money coming from? There is no money. I'll leave it there, Chair.
Great, thank you. Um, does anyone want to come back on any of that?
Um, okay, so I guess, I guess with the Sheepscar Clipper Lane infrastructure, there's clearly demand from the north. There's, there's propensity, clear propensity to cycle. I think this was one of the original areas that we looked in the LC Whip because of that propensity and potential demand that we wanted to unlock. Um, I can take away the comments to our traffic team about the, the lanes in particular. But in terms of the actual infrastructure, it, it's not reduced the capacity or the number of lanes from my understanding on, on that Clipper Lane section. And we've managed to provide segregated cycle provision into the city centre, which, where it was a tremendous barrier to active modes. Um, the target itself, um, that is actively being monitored against the uh Transport Strategy Action Plan, which we provide annual updates, um, I believe to this board. Um, but we continue to monitor and continue to ensure that we, we do deliver that target.
I think you definitely will because I'm going to be on a bike loads. Kate?
Yeah, I, I think the statistic and we, we played it back, isn't it? That cycling may be a smaller percentage of the trips on an, on a link, but they are disproportionate in terms of the scale of the KSIs that are associated with those. And, and we all know how challenging the sheep scars of this world are. Um, and so, you know, if, if you look at that disproportionate numbers around the KSIs, I think it's really important that we have those segregated facilities through those tricky junctions in terms of our aspirations around Vision Zero. So it was really just, just to kind of emphasise that point, I think. It's, it's not just about the volume. It's also about safeguarding those individuals. And I think, you know, a really interesting statistic, we've just hit 200,000 trips on the e-bike scheme that we've got, which to my mind shows that there's demand there and it is, you know, when you look at the trips that that is, is concentrated on, there's a real correlation where we provided those safe cycling facilities as well. So I think there is, there is the appetite there. We acknowledge there is a way to go. And we acknowledge that there's a, there's a mind shift change that is still needed in terms of this transition to, to walking and cycling for.
It's a chicken and egg situation, isn't it? Like you can't get people cycling until you've got the infrastructure, but you put the infrastructure in and it looks like nobody's using it because it's not yet. Um, sort of filtered into everyone's uh day-to-day lives. Councillor Prior?
I, and I think further to that point, I think that speaks to some of the importance of this work. I think for, but not everyone, but for some people, if 90% of their journey is kind of segregated and safe, but, but 10% doesn't have segregated cycleways, they won't get on a bike. And actually it's about joining all those bits up, all those bits of infrastructure up. So as we do more, um, I, I think we'll, we'll hit kind of an exponential level uh of increase. I, I just want to address some of councillor Buckley's points about uh some of the infrastructure in that part of the city. I believe the Leeds North East constituency is the only constituency in the country to have never had a railway station. I, I think that's something else told once. I'll double check it, uh but it means we can't even blame Beeching for that one. Yeah, Wetherby. Um, well, Wetherby's in um different constituency, but um, aside from that, I, I think, I, I mean, I take your point, there are fewer options uh for people from that part of the world. It's where obviously we've got the Leeds tram, where the first stage is kind of, we've got the Leeds line and the Bradford line. They'll have future tram lines coming out. And I think that's certainly part of the city we need to look quite seriously at because it's lacked that infrastructure. But I think um when, when Kate was talking about the, the, the 200,000 trips we've had on beryl bikes, for example, if we didn't have those beryl bikes, that's 200,000 trips that would have used a different mode of transport. That's potentially 200,000 additional cars in the city centre that would have significantly increased congestion. So even for those people from parts of the city where they've got fewer options, the benefit to them is there being fewer cars on the road and then more space for other cars to move around. So I think that, that emphasises the point that the cycling infrastructure doesn't just benefit those people using it. It actually benefits all road users.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to make several comments slash questions. I'm not expecting answers. Quite often at the end of a uh session, we run out of time for mine. But I would like the questions and comments noted so they can then be brought back um non-publicly. And one of the questions is from councillor Anderson around the interaction between floating bus stops and cyclists. And that also, um, so that was from the previous item. And I know Kate was here, so she can take that one away. Um, so if we can make sure that is answered as well. Um, and that leads also on to how we work with guide dogs and the fact that guide dogs cannot um effectively navigate cycle lanes and cyclists. Um, in the comms element, you talk about walking and wheeling and cycling. Um, I'd really like to see information on bike carriages and scooting. You can get non-e scooters um and that people use quite a lot. You can get scooters where it's got a treadmill on it. So you walk. Like there are so many varieties of active travel that can be utilised. Um, and certainly when I was living with a beastie, having, or more obesey, um, having a scooter that I could walk on as opposed to cycle would have made a massive difference to my ability to have active transport. They are in fact very expensive, but it still would be good to have that information there. And being able to carry my kids in a bike carriage um and do that safely and know how to do that safely on our roads. So I can pretend to be Dutch would also be really helpful for me. Um, we've spoken about the quality of signage and having those visual representations of junctions coming up. That came from the cycle safari. So a, a policy on how we're going to move that forward would be great. Um, I'm really grateful to you guys that you put in the next steps. And we haven't really spent that long on that. How are we going to get to number four? Um, which if we'd had more time, I think we would have done. Um, and I'd really like us to be able to assist you in any way that you need, recommendation wise, for meeting that next quality, um, quality level, I guess. Um, I'm interested in how we engage drivers when we put a cycle zone or cycle project together. One of the things from the cycle safari that I found really interesting is one of us councillors was less enamoured by cycle lanes and the idea of cycling. And then when they'd done the cycle safari, it made a massive impact on their view of what it's like to cycle on our roads. And actually finding a way to engage drivers so that they are able to um have an influence on how we can put that cycle stuff in, but not be annoyed by it as drivers will probably make that sort of um relationship a little better. Um, and then finally, oh, actually that's a lie, this two things, almost finally. I'd really like to see, and I will bring this up again with um Martin. Uh, I'd really like to see us looking at how we can use planning and developments in the city centre, et cetera, to make sure there is cycle locking provision. We're very good at the infrastructure to do the cycling. But actually in a similar way to our obstructive parking, having a place to put your bike once you get somewhere is more difficult. Um, and then finally, finally, I just want it on a positive note noted that what that map that showed the impact of 10 years on cycle provision and how much more there was on the map, it didn't show the improvements that have been made to the stuff that was there already. So actually not only is it, there's more, the stuff that we've got is much better as well. Um, is there anything there that you want to come back on now, bearing in mind you've got about a minute? No, you're happy to take it. And when I get the responses back, I will then share it with everyone. Um, any summing up comments, councillor Prior? No content? Officers, any summing up comments? Excellent. Okay, so we'll move on to the recommendations, which are not available because I have not opened the thing to the right location. Oh, okay. So we need to note and comment on the report, which we have done. And I'm really grateful to you guys for bringing it to us because we specifically requested a cycle infrastructure um session. And to endorse the recommendations to support an increase in West Yorkshire's capability rating with active travel in England, which is that getting us to grade four. Um, and I would like as a scrutiny board for us to support in any way that we can with that. Are people happy with those recommendations? Yes, yes. Okay, excellent. I'm going to call for a comfort break now. And then we'll come back to um item 12, which is the local plan update. Thank you. Um, and what does the pla- how does the plan engage with scrutiny board topics? Page 189, um supporting paper 820, page 189, 195, and supporting paper 1421, just to give you an indication of how many papers we had for this meeting. Uh, how do we engage and consult with the public at page 176? Um, and it's, yeah, I'm going to leave it there. Uh, so I am going to invite councillor Prior. Do you want to make any introductions?
Uh, just very briefly, um, just to thank the residents of Leeds for all of the, the huge number of responses to the consultation uh that have taken place. Um, we think it may have been the largest consultation that the city's ever held on anything in terms of responses. Uh, we're, we're double checking with the press office, but there, there doesn't seem to be any collective memory of anything bigger. Um, so it, it's just a, a, a great uh show of democracy and it's a quite a bit of work for us to, to, to go through. So I will, with that, I will pass on.
Thank you. That is, that's outstanding. Um, thank you Leeds, in fact. Uh, can I ask officers to introduce yourselves and then introduce the item? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Martin Elliott. I'm the head of strategic planning.
Hello, my name is Caroline Harris and I'm a principal planning officer.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, members of the board. Um, and thanks for the opportunity to, and provide an overview of the Leeds local plan. Um, as you'll probably know, the plan is a statutory framework that guides how land is to be used and developed across the district um between 2024 and 2042. It is at an early stage of production and thus.
Just very briefly, just to thank the residents of Leeds for all of the huge number of responses to the consultation that have taken place. We think it may have been the largest consultation that the city has ever held on anything in terms of responses. We're double checking with the press office, but there doesn't seem to be any collective memory of anything bigger. So it's just a great show of democracy, and it's quite a bit of work for us to go through. So I will, with that, I will pass on.
Thank you. That is, that's outstanding. Thank you, Leeds, in fact. Can I ask officers to introduce yourselves and then introduce the item? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Martin Elliott. I'm the head of strategic planning.
Hello, my name is Caroline Harris, and I'm a principal planning officer.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, members of the board, and thanks for the opportunity to provide an overview of the Leeds local plan. As you probably know, the plan is a statutory framework that guides how land is to be used and developed across the district between 2024 and 2042. It is at an early stage of production, and thus far, it's been shaped by Development Plans Panel, and in turn, that panel has advised Executive Board on the material that's been approved for public consultation, which ran for 10 weeks this summer. The plan sets out a shared vision for sustainable growth, shaping decisions on housing, infrastructure, new employment locations, and environmental priorities for the next 18 years. And it will be the framework against which all planning applications are assessed. We're updating the plan because the current plan's been developed in a piecemeal fashion over the last 12 years, comprising about five individual documents. And a lot has changed within that period, both locally, regionally, and nationally. The plan, as I said, currently covers about five development plan documents, and they contain about 250 policies in total. So that inevitably means the Leeds Local Plan Update is quite a huge undertaking, which is why it is quite extensive, and there is quite a lot of material to engage with people on. But what we're hoping to do is to make the planning framework a single document, which is clearer, more accessible, and better aligned with the council's strategic ambitions, which hopefully, in the material you'll see, are very clearly signposted throughout, both in terms of economic growth, inclusive growth, looking at different parts of the city and different parts of the district, and how they should respond to new development, both in terms of meeting their needs, but also as a lever for investment, but also looking at ways in which that development and the connections between development lend themselves to delivering multipurpose outputs such as green infrastructure, active travel, and improvement for health. The emerging plan sets out 35 strategic objectives. They include objectives on housing, around 70,000 new homes to be identified to meet local needs, with a very strong emphasis on meeting significantly more affordable homes during that plan period, looking at the evidence that we've got locally, that around about 1,500 homes need to be affordable each year, with a significant amount of those being for social rented housing. Housing mix, again, using that local evidence that we've got through the housing market assessment to really dig into the type of homes that should be provided, so that we don't just have a sort of a mono housing offer within the city. We've got the right homes, such as bungalows, homes for older people, in the right places. Employment land, allocating sites for around 300 hectares of industrial and logistics space, and nearly half a million square metres of office space, particularly around our centres and around our transport hubs. Sustainability writ large throughout the document, from promoting energy efficient buildings, reusing materials, to supporting active travel, as the previous items just been discussing. Alongside community infrastructure, because the plan, a new development as a lever for investment, can actually be the opportunity to bring the infrastructure that we need and the infrastructure that services that development through the plan making process. So ensuring that we meet those needs for a range of educational, health, wellbeing, and inclusive growth needs throughout the district, working very closely, not only with our internal infrastructure providers within the city council, but also statutory providers outside the city council, and private infrastructure providers. And finally, place making, writ large throughout the document, is an emphasis on ensuring that development is of good quality. I think a lot of people don't like new development, and are fearful of it, because they fear it's going to be poor quality. So the plan really is about trying to promote good quality, and bring new quality green spaces, for example, and make sure that these places and spaces are well designed. As councillor Prior said, we've just finished the Regulation 18 Issues and Options stage of consultation, which, again, I'll stress, is an early stage of the plan, that ran from the 7th of July to the 15th of September. Just a note on consultation, our consultation is governed by a statutory document called the Statement of Community Involvement. That is a longstanding document, which was updated, I think, a couple of years ago. And that sets out our ambitions for consultation. But depending on what planning document we're consulting on, we can actually go a bit further than what the Statement of Community Involvement says. So, for example, the SCI says a minimum of four weeks for consultation, but because of the scope of this plan, we've done 10 weeks. We've had 3,000, no, we haven't, we've had 39,500 individual comments on the plan so far. We know we've had 200,000 views on social media, and we've added 10,000 new subscribers to our database. We started our database with about 2,000 people that wanted to remain on our consultation database, so we've added 10,000 to that. The consultation really focused on what the new local plan should include, what the policy priorities and direction of travel for them were, and potential development sites, which we were seeking views on. We reached out, we did drop out, drop in events right the way across Leeds, we responded to requests to attend meetings, and we also held meetings with harder to reach groups, which we otherwise wouldn't normally engage with. So following the close of this consultation, we will be reading and analysing all of the feedback that we've received. That's obviously going to take us a bit of time. We'll be refining the policy proposals off the back of that, and listening to what people have to say. We'll also be refining our evidence base to make sure that we've got a robust plan, because it will be tested independently by an inspector. So anything that we put in it needs to be very robust. And we hope to publish the next stage of that plan, which will be draft policies and draft sites this time and next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Martin. I love that you've added 10,000 people to the database, the legacy of this being really democratic, then meaning that that democratic engagement moving forward is stronger, is a really massive outcome. I'm going to go first to councillor Anderson, and if anyone else wants to put their hand up, I will take him.
I'll be quick, because you've probably heard most of these problems already. The consultation scared the wits out of the public, because you only gave them part of the picture, you didn't give them the full picture. You've said yourself that it's only an initial stage. Well, people don't understand what the next parts are, and it's got them frightened that they're actually going to get development, because you've not explained what housing need is against housing demand, and why you've come up with large figures for certain areas, and people don't know whether you mean to be building in those areas or just this massive, again, not being parochial, outer north west, you've got a figure for that. Well, what does that mean? Does that mean Cuckridge, Addle, Geisley have got to take it? And you'll say, oh, yes, you've got a separate figure for Geisley, a separate figure for Horstford. But Horstford, the only one that's mentioned is Horstford Vale explicitly. Well, there's more to Horstford than North Northford Vale. So that's frightening people. You've also not taken into consideration other land uses to set aside for those, for agricultural use, for allotment use, the needs to build green space to say, well, you know, we can't have that house, if that wasn't a housing site, it could be turned into a green space, a play area, or some other recreational use. You've not taken that down. Housing mix, if you'd said to people, you're going to get bungalows, people might be more willing to accept some of the development. They don't know what they're going to get, because you're just relying on developers. And the other thing I'll make is affordable housing. I can't see how this is going to help deliver affordable housing, because we're always going to have a viability problem where in the city centre, which means that the developers will then argue that we can't build houses in the city centre, and we need to build in the outskirts, where you will get the viability, where you will get the affordable housing, but we actually need it in other locations in the city. So I don't know how you're going to square those circles. It's not gone down well with the community in my area at all. There was also a lack of consultation events being run. You had one of the highest numbers of sites coming forward in award in mine, and you didn't have one event in the ward.
Thank you. Any comments back on that?
Thanks, Chair. I think I'd probably just like to say, we're really acknowledged that planning for the future of our city inevitably raises strong feelings. And that's because people do care deeply about their communities, their green spaces, the character of their neighbourhoods. And, you know, that passion isn't only understandable, it's really welcome. And it's exactly why we're consulting, and it's why we're consulting so widely and also so transparently. And I think that transparency, I think, is key to this approach, even when it's uncomfortable, because we have been criticised in the past that we've taken decisions without involving people at an early stage. So I actually quite welcome the conversations I've had with people, and the points we've had. Just final point, it's consultation, it's not decision making. So it's about exploring options, it's about not confirming outcomes. And we tried really hard to make that clear throughout the material that went out. The points that councillor Anderson's made about sort of wider issues, they're all in the plan, and they will all be taken into account. There were quite a lot of material on renewable energy, and the way we'd approached assessing agricultural land, and also looking at delivering a housing mix for local people in particular areas. Just on the points that councillor Anderson made about housing needs, if I pass over to Caroline, thank you.
Yes, so thank you. So in terms of, I guess, housing need overall, the national government has a sort of standard method for how housing needs for a local authority level area are calculated. So it gives, it gives us what the requirement that we need to find land for across the plan period. And then what we've done is we've used that, and we've also got our strategic housing market assessment, which provides real detailed bottom up evidence about what those needs are in terms of mixed needs for affordable housing, type tenure, and so on. And I think, again, because we're at quite an early stage in the process, we haven't worked through exactly, well, what is it, how much development is going to go to different places exactly. But what we have done is we can use the standard method as a starting point, and that basically looks at how many houses are already in an area, and applies a, an uplift based on their affordability. So through the consultation document, we set out, well, what would that mean for each sub area in the plan, and also each settlement, if you were to take that standard method approach of looking at how many houses have you got at the moment, and then their affordability. But there's lots of decisions to make about the strategy for planning for growth, and that was one of the key focuses of this consultation. We sort of set out different options in terms of focus on the city centre. We know there's a lot of growth has happened in the city centre, it's got further capacity for growth to take place, there's potential opportunities along tram corridors which will come forward, which have potential. But there's also needs in outer areas as well. So how we balance that and bring it together, I think that's a lot of what this consultation was about, and we need to understand what people think about that, what they think that overall strategy should be for where growth across the city is directed to, before we then make exact decisions about exactly how much development can happen in different places, because there's a lot of factors that need to go into that. So at the next stage of the process, we'll take on board the comments we received about that, and have a clearer plan about, well, what are we proposing? But at this stage, it was really sort of setting out all of the options for people to feed in their views at an early stage.
Thank you. I'm going to call out the names of councillors in order, and then we'll probably realistically overrun by about 10 minutes, but please do keep stuff brief in order that we can get through it as swiftly as possible. Chapman, then Jones, then Wilson, then Scopes, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on the consultation, really. We found there wasn't a proper paper version of it for those people that can't go online. I think we did ask for it, and we got screenshots of the commonplace screens for people, but there was no way for their names or addresses or anything like that. And so for the next round of consultation, if we can make sure we include those people that don't have access to the internet or Facebook, I think that would help. I think there's an issue where we were still taking in the corporate site during the consultation. So the consultation's not actually finished, because we're going to have to consult on those new sites that come in, as I understand it. I think it would have been useful to provide more information to local groups, such as the neighbourhood forums that are involved in planning. They found the site assessment report really useful when they got it, but we had to ask for it, and it took a while to get there. So maybe next time, we do look at key consultees as well as our residents. And I'll just have a comment about, the comment about fear about poor quality housing, I'm sure that is there. But for me, and for my residents at any rate, what they feared most is the impact on their local services. The fact that we struggle with schools, doctors, dentists, and roads now, what several thousand more houses in any area going to bring, and that's what they want to know the answers to. They accept the need for housing. And yes, people will always want somewhere that's slightly away from where they live. But their biggest concern was the impact on the area, and the green belt, the merging of areas. So the fact that we've now got this grey belt peculiar definition, taking away some of the green belt purposes. In some cases, we are going to be merging Adley and Robinhood with Rothwell, if we're not very careful, we're going to lose that distinction. So that was a concern as well. So I think all of those things for the next time around would be really helpful.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Jones?
I've got a slight issue with how you've assessed sites. Sorry, me? Okay. A slight issue with how you assess sites. We've got a site that's presently with the inspector, because the council's rejected it on four different counts. Yet that manages to score very well in the assessment. You've also got, it's got, the public transport link is quite good, but actually, it's not. It's 970 yards in a straight line, but if actually you go via the streets, it's nearly a mile. So I would knock that regard. So I don't understand, is this being done on a desktop, or is people actually going to look at the sites? Because that doesn't make sense. The fact that we've rejected it twice, and we reject it on appeal, that ends up with the inspector, and it ends up being agreeing. I find that incredible. So I have a issue with that. I'd like to know how you arrived at that, to be honest.
Councillor Wilson?
First of all, thank you. You put on an extra event in our area, and I think it was possibly councillor Anderson that requested it, or Elsa, and she got us involved. Yeah. Well, in a way, I was somehow copied in. But, and thanks for your briefing to me as well, which really helped, and I could explain to my residents much more clearly about the scoring and things like that. I think most people engage with a local plan for a specific site, probably, that's near them. How do we kind of keep people engaged in that site to reduce speculation about what's happening with it? And you mentioned that the next draft comes in a year's time. If there are sites that are just much easier to assess, like, okay, this one's been proposed, but it's clearly not, you know, viable, et cetera, can any of those be released more quickly to reduce speculation, and, you know, just for general responsiveness?
Thanks, Isaac. Councillor Scopes?
Thank you, Chair. So thanks for this report. So first thing is probably is around place efficiency, which I think is really important. And when I read the report, I couldn't see place efficiency in there anyway. And the reason this has come up is in one of my, in my world, one of the areas that has houses planned, has a football pitch on it. So informal goals, which are well used, so something around place efficiency. So I don't know if we can make a recommendation, given we've got a play champion, and we take the need of children very high, and we're a child friendly city. So I think that, I'd love it if we could make that a recommendation, Chair. And then my other two comments around, we talked earlier about the challenge of parking on pavements, and the impact that has on various people. And I think one of the challenges we have in the South Bank area, where there's lots of new flats planned and being planned, is that the requirements on parking are basically, Neil, you don't need to plan for parking. And whilst that is a noble aim, the reality is people do own cars, and then that means that there are cars parked Okay. And finally, it would be good to be able to see some LGBT plus housing need policy in there as well. And it would be good if we can, when you spoke about community infrastructure, just going a bit wider than just sort of this statutory education type stuff. Could you come back on those in about five minutes? Thank you.
Absolutely fine. So thank you for those comments. Just in terms of the way we carried out the consultation, and I take councillor Chapman's points about paper. Given the large amount and given the large volume of information, the paper version of the plan is currently like that, literally, it is stacked. And the website has been the main means of information. But we made it very clear that if you want a paper copy or you want specific pieces in paper, we'll print them off and we'll send them to you, and that's what we've done. But we've had less than a dozen requests for that. So I think generally people have managed to engage with the material on the website. But where we've been asked for it, we have done it. And there is a summary, which is paper, in each library and each one stop shop. But if we haven't quite got it right, then we'll keep talking. And in the next stage, when we do it, then we'll ask how you would like it to happen within your local communities, in the same way that before this consultation, we did, we did go around and brief all members to sort of ask them where we should focus and where we should hold events. And we tried to respond to what we received on that. In terms of grey belt, green belt, that is a government initiative. And it's a specific initiative designed to support increasing the delivery of housing, because like many parts of the country, Leeds has done very well in using brownfield land. 80% of all its housing's been on brownfield land over the last 15 years, but we do run out. But we also have housing needs to meet. So that balance, as Caroline described earlier, is really important. Can I just stress, though, that we are at a very early stage in this process? And we're currently looking at about 600 odd sites. That's too many sites to be really specific on at this stage. So what we need to do is we need to narrow those sites down. What I would like to do is I'd like to not wait a year to be able to come back and give the public clarity on which sites are moving forward to the next stage and which sites can be discounted. So I'd like to consider and work through Development Plan Panel in terms of how we actually get those messages out. And that will hopefully start to clarify for local people and avoid the speculation that we've talked about. In terms of the assessed sites, we are obliged to assess sites that are submitted to us. Now, it is quite frustrating when you get a site that's been rejected in the past, that keeps coming back like a bad penny. But we do have to go through the same process. And things may have changed and landowners, you know, are entitled to be able to put new evidence to us and new arguments to us about why a site should come forward. If it was a bad site in the past, it may well turn out it's going to be a bad site again against our current criteria. And I'm not sure whether, oh yes, just in terms of councillor Scope's point about place efficiency. I'm disappointed, councillor Scopes, that you didn't manage to find those references. They are in there. I will send them to you. One of the objectives on green space and making places available for, what does it say? Delivery of high quality, sustainable and resilient places that people of all demographics want to live, work and play in. That's where we've captured place efficiency. And that's largely through high quality green space provision and design of new housing. But that also relates to city centre housing as well, where you might not get the opportunity to have that as external play. And actually, we'd quite like to try to encourage internal play for the children that we'd like to live within the city centre. So I can direct you to where those points are. And I will, I'll take away the point on intermittently used land. But we are looking at how to make the best use of our land and our sites within the city. I'm hoping that that covered most of the points. I think it did. Was there anything that you wanted to add to this? Yes, and certainly we'll, what's, just in terms of the LGBT plus point. When we made the plan about 10 years ago, there were only about half a dozen sort of types of housing and sort of models of housing, and developers who were engaged in delivering those were quite few. We've now got a far greater spectrum of different housing types and different developers prepared to deliver different housing types. So it's going to be really helpful for us, for our policies to lean into what those look like in different parts of the city. We do have to remember, though, that the planning policy is quite a blunt tool. So it may be that we seek to encourage, rather than require, on some specialist forms of housing. But we are also seeing lots of self-build and community owned housing as well, which I think, and the way that we are choosing to deal with those sorts of houses, is on the very large sites, require developers to have different outlets. So actually, rather than have a standard five bed executive house across a whole of a large site, actually have different pockets of development, which could be brought forward, not necessarily by that developer, but by others who are interested in bringing forward a particular type. So there's lots to go at there, but I've noted your point, councillor.
Thank you. I wonder if it's worth, between that, where you bring forward the sites that are just, were always a bit of a nonsense, information and put it out consultation again, whether it's worth us having a workshop, just so that some of those points that were made around where you've said, oh, actually, a little bit of extra information on that might be helpful. Actually, we could do a, I wouldn't be able to offer time in the scrutiny meeting, like as in the public meeting, but a private workshop, we could potentially have time, if that would be helpful to you.
That would be extremely helpful. I think that would work really well. Thank you.
Great. So as to have another meeting, everyone, not sorry at all. Okay, great. So our recommendations, I'm going to leave you with the place scrutiny one until you, fine. If, when it comes, there is stuff that you still think, then we can be, because it's coming back. Well, that's one of the recommendations. So to note and provide comment on the proposed new local plan, I think we've done. There's going to be multiple other options and opportunities to confirm that the scrutiny board will receive the plan again at draft stage, currently at the end of summer 2026. And at that point, should that play recommendation be needed, we can put that in. I will, Martin, I'll draft an email to you about the LGBT housing stuff, because I perhaps was a little blunt in my explanation of it, because I was short of time. So I'll do that as well. Is everyone happy with those recommendations? Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. Councillor Prior, you want to drop any last sum up? Nope, happy. Apologies for overrunning by 10 minutes. And thank you to those of you that stayed for your tolerance of my tardiness. Next meeting is on Wednesday, the 5th of November at 9:45, and there'll be a pre-meeting at 9:30. Thanks, folks.